We're going to call to order the regular meeting again, and I will report out on our closed session, which is anticipated litigation pursuit to the government code section 54956.9. And our report out is that no action was taken, and it was discussion with legal counsel. So I'm going to move us into our typical regular meeting, which would be special presentations, but we do not have any scheduled for tonight. So we will move right away into general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to address the council on issues not on the agenda or issues on our consent agenda, which is a check register for August 29th through September 11th, 2020. Each member of the public will be given three minutes to make their general public comment. If you would like to make a general comment now is your time. You can either let me know you'd like to make a comment in the chat function, or you can go to the participants button on your toolbar and you can raise your hand. And I'll give everybody a couple of seconds to do that. All right, I do not see any hands or chat requests to make a general public comment. So I'm going to move us on to staff and member comments, and I'm going to begin with city manager Yuhas.
Sure, so I just wanted to report out to members of council that we haven't forgotten about the issue of short-term rentals, and Rico is working on it. And he said he will have a report back to us shortly. That's one. The, the second is I made the decision to put off runway reconstruction this year and put it off to spring and made sure that the folks that bid on this would hold their prices through spring, just so we can have Forest Service and Caltrans aeronautical be able to stage out of the airport during all the craziness that's going on with fires. The, there is some interest. There is Northland Cable that is working down New Mott Airport. They have a node that they can easily pull some, you know, fiber out of that would serve five or six customers down there that want it. But they also wanted to get a sense if there's anybody in the community that would subscribe to their service, which we assume would be pretty expensive, and whether there's appetite for them to bring fiber to the city of Dunsmere.
All right, is there any questions for city manager Yuhas? Councilmember Art, go ahead.
Well, the city of Dunsmere needs broadband capability. In the months ahead, we will need to figure out whether we have a number of suitors to provide it, or we are simply uneconomic and we are going to have to build our own system. Do you get a sense we could negotiate with this entity or not?
Negotiate with them in what way? They, they, they're willing to delay it. It's just, do we have a critical, you know, and we know this isn't going to be a, a large percent of the, of the population, but do we have, you know, they didn't list a number, but hey, can we come up with enough folks that want this? And I just, I don't personally have a sense of that, but I do know from an economic development perspective, if we're trying to get folks into the city that want to work remotely, you know, fast internet is absolutely a necessity.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, councilmember Deutsch.
I just want to remind all that three different cities spent $100,000 and came up with the answer, and the answer was essentially that because we have such a strong competitor right now in Northland, which has been bought by another company called Wise, because of that, it would be really hard to find enough people to come up with the cost to go door-to-door and provide the last mile. And because of that, the estimate was that it would take approximately between $1,200 and $2,400 per connection, per household, to be able to make it viable. So what all three cities at the time decided to do was to let Northland continue to do what they're doing. And I think what they're doing is covering most of the areas. If a business wants to come in and wants to get the large fiber, they can do that. And by the way, my understanding is, is that the, the police department has a fire, has a fiber connection across the street. So just to let you know on that too, thank you.
So it would involve fiber trunk line having to be run downtown first there. They said that they have door tags. It's, it's a matter of getting them out to folks, and it's not a cost to the city. It's a cost, just an economy of scale that we have enough people that are willing to spend. I believe he said it's like $130 a month, which is, it's a, it's a lot for a lot of residents, but for others, they need it.
Is there, just really quick, councilmember Art, go ahead and ask your question. I'll ask.
Oh, no, it's simply, this is part of the visioning exercise we need to conduct in the months ahead with the notion, if we have any hope as a small city and community for economic survival, from our schools, to our police, to our fire department, we need to have broadband ubiquity. We need to have community hooked up or else being left behind. So we need to start a process. And I like when we get to the garbage collection issue, issuing a franchise. I know there are significant pots of money available at the state level and the federal level. And yes, councilmember Deutsch is correct. We had a three-city approach with Mount Chasta and with Weed, and in the end, we were unsuccessful. But to me, this is a non-negotiable goal for a city that wants to survive in rural California.
So without going into further discussion, I think what I will do is reach out to city manager Yuhas after the meeting, and we can take a look. One of the things that could bring down the price per household is, you know, looking at what grant availability that we have. I have a couple more technical questions. So what I will do is I will make a note to bring back a report for staff and member comments for our next meeting, for an update on this. And if councilmembers have any other additional questions, we can make sure those get addressed and communicated at the next meeting.
And we, we have a copy of, of the report that came out of that effort distributed to the council?
Sure, if we can find it, councilmember Deutsch, I think you might be.
I have a copy.
Yeah, if you could forward that to city manager Yuhas, he can forward the CTC report out. And then just circling back, city manager Yuhas, did you want to conclude your comment for today?
Yeah, just, yeah, and we'll do that with the report at the next council meeting. But the other piece of this too is the Northland reps have offered to come up and give a presentation or answer questions.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, we'll coordinate that and make sure that fits into our schedule. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to, I don't see Ben on the call today, but he did update us at our last meeting. So I'm actually going to move to councilmember comments. And I'd like to start with councilmember Art today, do you have any comments?
Really only one, and that is in the context of the wildfires throughout California and the resiliency of the electric grid. I do think the city of Dunsmere and Mott Airport would be an ideal candidate for Pacific Power and Light to do a solar farm and a battery storage facility with the notion I-5 is going to be the electric highway. It will be the leader on this side of the Mississippi for everything from semi-trucks to personal automotives to motorcycles. And I like Monty Mendenhall. I think he's an honest broker for the utility. He delayed his retirement to help his employer get through the crisis. But I would really love to see a discussion starting around the notion of the solar potential and Dunsmere having an asset that turns into a very valuable asset instead of a problem. Thank you.
Can I, okay. Do you want to go, city manager Yuhas, or do you want me? Because I actually just met with Todd from Pacific Power last week and was going to report out on it.
Well, I just, it's, it may be a little, but playing on what Peter said, for anybody that is watching tech, Tesla has what's called the quote-unquote Battery Day announcement next week. And two of the things that have leaked, and we don't know if they're true until it comes out, is that Tesla has got under the, the $100 kilowatt hour level that they thought was impossible when it was $200 a kilowatt hours a few years ago. And that, what that means is that, that would bring the price of a Model 3 Tesla down to like say a Honda or, you know, a Honda Accord or, you know, Toyota Camry. And that the, the battery life, they're reporting they're going to potentially be announcing getting 100, I'm sorry, a million miles out of the battery setup for one of these vehicles. Just so that if we've got a bite on there, that's, that would be timely to start moving on something like that, if it's possible.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to go to my comments, and then I'll go to councilmember Kaisler, Brian, and then Deutsch, because this, you know, just kind of swings into my comments for this week. So I met with Todd Andress, who's the new Monty. He is our regional representative for Pacific Power. He is housed out of Klamath Falls, Oregon, and he and I had a really good meeting last week or the week before. It's been a very long week, so I don't even really know what date it is anymore. But right now, there are two grants open for public entities for technical assessments for electrical systems within buildings, battery storage purchases, and backup generator purchases. And they do not have any takers for that current grant. So I sent that grant to the school districts, and I will send it over to city manager Yuhas as well. And the idea is, is the program is for safety and resilience. And so they want to place these backup facilities in buildings that are going to be open during natural disasters or being cooling and warming centers, things like that. So typically, we really promote the schools to do that, since they typically do that. But we could definitely have the community center upgraded. So I'm working on that. The other thing is to address councilmember Art's discussion on a solar panel field. That's definitely doable, and one of the grants that's going to be opening up next year is early next year, calendar year, is the Pacific Power Blue Skies Grant, which will pay for technical assistance to do the solar assessment for that. It doesn't necessarily cover all of construction, but we would be able to get some construction in that as well. So we can keep that on the radar for when that grant opens up. I know Pacific Power is always looking for project proposals for those. So I will be in contact with him to, in contact with Todd Andress to make sure that we are on the docket, and we should be able to get some assessment money to make sure, to see if a solar field up by the airport is a feasible project. So that's just kind of what happened there. The other update I just want to give is on moss spray falls and the parking situation up on the streets. So with visitors kind of trickling down a little bit, one of the things people have been concerned about is fire access and fire safety. And speaking with CalFire and speaking with Chief Padilla, you know, if it does come time for us to evacuate, there is a member of those safety agencies that does go to Hedge Creek and notifies people to clear out and basically evacuate. So those roads will be kept open by safety personnel if we do need to use them for evacuation. So even though you see people parked there right now, if we were in a serious situation where we needed to evacuate, those cars would be moved quickly. The other thing too, to bring up is that we are slowly moving forward with the moss spray project with the Trails Association. The main thing we're working on right now is securing the lease and completing the environmental and engineering documents for the trail itself. But one of the things we are keeping in mind is that probably next year, we'll be looking into planning and engineering dollars to address the parking issue and seeing what we can do about getting off-street parking for people using those facilities. I know it's been exacerbated this past year because of COVID and people not necessarily wanting to be in the cities. But we are working on it. One, one of the things we want to do is secure that lease agreement with Union Pacific prior to working on some of the other facilities there. Other than that, I think that's the only thing I have for updates this week that I can remember off the top of my head. I need to keep notes a little bit better, but I will conclude there. Councilmember Kaisler, do you have any comments?
Well, it was about, I don't know, seven years ago. And I actually had a check for $10 million. And the investor wanted to go put solar out at the airport. And at that time, we were told that it can only be used for the airport. Thank God we've got to where we are now. And as Peter was saying, that idea is, it's phenomenal. It, Dunsmere has the opportunity to be top of the game, you know? That's, the I-5 is going to be an electric freeway. And it, this could really, really, really benefit the city of Dunsmere. I'm just glad that we're at that point now, and it, it took so long to get here. But with everybody's efforts, we proved that we can use that land. So it's a great day for us, I'm glad. That's all I got, thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Brian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report in this meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch?
Thank you, ma'am. The only thing I'd like to do is take this opportunity to recognize that we as a community made it through the summer of hell, and we made it through with a swarm of people unlike we've ever seen before coming up here and all the different ways that we could have been stung by the virus. And I really want to hand it to the community and to everybody else. And I think we should take a moment just to celebrate the fact that we've made it this far. I know the.
And knock on wood.
Yeah, knock on wood. And the path ahead is going to be, take a while before we get to the clear point. But I just feel glad that Dunsmere didn't have any, any loss of life through this. And I understand some people got sick, but thank you. That's all I just want to celebrate.
Councilmember Art, you have a comment or a question?
The question, I guess, to staff or anybody that knows is when will the governor update the four-color tier list? And when does Siskiyou County have the opportunity to move into the most lightly regulated tier?
I would not know. I think that's going to be a question we can relay to public health, and we can let the council know and report back at the next meeting if you'd like.
Well, I, I think, you know, I sort of feel like we have been fortunate, as councilmember Deutsch said, and that in fact, we may be less impacted than much of California. And I just hope instead of staying in the shutdown mode, we can intelligently manage our way back to whatever the new normal is.
Ma'am, quick question. Is it possible that if we looked at coming back, but doing it where we're not meeting in our council chambers, which is small and poorly ventilated, but if we made the point of going through the rest of this by a meeting in the community building where we can have social distancing?
I know that that has been requested by a couple members of the public. I'm very wary to begin that process yet because we are, there's a predicted second wave coming of COVID cases in October.
Good point, yeah.
So I want to make sure that, that we're smart about how we open up these meetings. The other thing is, is we are still at half-capacity. I think councilmember Art has a really good point about watching the COVID list. And I think as Siskiyou County gets updated into a lesser tier of restrictions, I would feel more comfortable having the city council meet in person again, or at least having some kind of onsite accommodations. I'm just, I'm very wary about it and, and want to definitely make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to restrict people from being able to come to those in-person meetings, because I would hate to get to our 50% capacity and then tell people no, and then get in deeper trouble. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're going to do it at a time that we really are at a much lower infection rate than, than what we are now. So and I talked to city manager Yuhas about this point a lot, and I appreciate it that people are checking in and people do want to meet in person. I also would like to meet in person again. But I want to make sure that when we do that, it, it ends up being a smarter choice than having to do it for one or two meetings and then go back to online. City manager Yuhas?
Just to add that I'm on a call twice a week with the state about wildfires and where we are in COVID. So I'm monitoring it and hearing the discussions. So and I'll, I'll pass this along when I hear any change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move us into committee reports. Are there any committee reports today? Seeing none.
Finance committee met, but I don't know where Matthew, our chairman, went.
Well, we did meet, finance committee met and discussed items on our agenda. No action or recommendations were made, taken or made.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other committee reports? One of the things I would like to request Wendy or city manager Yuhas, I think at committee reports, if one or, if one of you could maybe have like the planning commission meeting minutes available for us to take a look at in the packet, or if there's a way to get a summary of the items reviewed and actions taken, you know, for this committee report section, I think it would be nice to get an update from the planning commission, since we have charged them with reviewing housing, short-term rentals, and parking.
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. It doesn't have to be anything elaborate, maybe just to keep us abreast on what's going on at that committee level would be nice. All right. Bless you. I'm going to move us into approval of the minutes. Today, we have on the table city council regular meeting minutes for September 3rd, 2020. Is there any discussion?
I, I had, I read the minutes, and they are lovely. And thank you to Wendy for the corrections. On page six of our agenda packet, and I assume I mumble, and that's the problem. But for item 11B, new business, Art is saying that the city of Weed has had success in moving buildings that are abandoned and falling apart to the Supreme Court to enforce and prevent deteriorating condition. That should be the Superior Court of Siskiyou County.
So that is an amendment? All right. All right, is there any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as, as amended?
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to councilmember Deutsch. All right, motion by councilmember Kaisler, seconded by councilmember Deutsch to move forward with the minutes as amended, any discussion at the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself as an I, thank you very much, and thank you, Peter, for that catch on that page. I will move us into our consent agenda, which is not item number eight, but it is a different number. I went without numbers because we had the closed session. So today, we have one item, which is check register, register for August 29th through September 11th, 2020. Any discussion?
And move, we adopt the consent agenda?
All right, I'll give it to council, I'll give it to councilmember Deutsch, motioned, and councilmember Kaisler, seconded. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaisler? Councilmember Kaisler, you there?
Yeah, aye.
Oh, thank you, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself as an I, motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. We do not have any public hearings scheduled for tonight. And we do have some old business though, so we will move into item A, which is a revised draft of the solid waste request for proposals, which a copy of that can be found in our agenda packet on page 11. City manager Yuhas, whenever you're ready.
Sure, so we brought back a version with a number of, you know, grammatical mistakes and have clarified some of the language and cleaned that up. And we still, you know, so as I mentioned last time, there are all these things that were mandated to start doing, like separating food waste at, at restaurants and, you know, starting recycling, you know, and on and on. And so just because we've been pushing this can, you know, or kicking this can for years, it's time that we go out and see if we can get a full contract in place. And I think we're ready to go with this unless folks have additional comments. I will note that in the version that you have, the timeline still needs to be changed based on what the outcome is from tonight. And we've also added a lot of the supporting, all of the supporting information we need for this to go out. And I would, would also say that I spoke to Diana Duran today, and, and there were a couple edits that she added that she'd like to see changed in terms of just not Clemens waste hauling, but Clemens waste hauling, recycling, or I'm sorry, waste removal. And, you know, she's a little apprehensive about this process, but is ready to move forward. And we had a good chat, and she's ready to get rolling on it and seek it out.
Madam Mayor? Are we still here?
Madam Mayor?
We lost Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I'm here, sorry, I'm here. I had to step away for one second, but I was listening on my headphones, and I can't unmute on my headphones. Councilmember Art, go ahead.
Well, I, this is both to you, Madam Mayor, and the city manager. It looks like, under the terms, I'm looking at page 13 of the agenda packet, section one introduction, that we currently are under a franchise agreement with CWH, which I assume is Clement Waste Haulers. And is what we're proposing to do with this new RFP an overlay with the franchise agreement that the city of Mount Chasta did? Or are we simply continuing a franchise arrangement that we've already had, where whoever the designated contractor is, they pay a franchise fee?
So right now, my, go ahead.
Go ahead, Talia.
I was going to say, right now, my understanding is we are in a sole proprietor agreement. So that's a misprint on page 13, that we are not in a franchise agreement presently. What we would be doing, yep. And so what we would be doing with this RFP is we would put out feelers for what a franchise agreement would look like for the city of Dunsmere. Now, as a city council, before this RFP goes out, we could, we could either send this out as a franchise RFP, or we could send this out as a sole proprietor. or we could send this out as a sole proprietorship RFP. There are pros and cons to both sides. One being a sole proprietorship. Typically, the city will do a little bit more on its side for customer service, billing, specialty hauling, if we have to do that. For a franchise fee agreement, we basically give all of the services over to the franchisee. And there are some efficiencies to that. One of the other things to note is this is just putting out feelers. So what we could do is we could put this out as a franchise agreement. And if we get a bid from Clemens, or we get a bid from John Smith, and they come back saying, you know, we don't want to do billing on our side, or we don't want to deal with certain aspects, we would then have an ability to take a look at what that would look like. And we could negotiate that with the individuals who bid for it. Or we could discuss that with the individual whose bid that we've chosen. So there's a couple of different negotiation ways we can go. Like I said, the big thing with a franchise agreement is we would be taking a lot of the services that the city does now. Specifically, like I said, the billing piece of it, and we would be putting it on the franchisee. And again, Clemens, for example, if they bid this, they could come back and say, you know, we really don't want to do the billing portion. And we can discuss that at that time. So that is one thing I do want to keep in mind with the council members is that if we put out this RFP and we get back proposals that just don't satisfy what we're trying to achieve, which all of us may have different goals for that. For example, for me, I want to be able to offer comprehensive services at a affordable price. You know, if, if our proposals come back not in that area, we can always choose to go back out for proposals and maybe shift this RFP. Or again, if we only get one person bidding, we can negotiate with that person what that, that service would look like. But again, we should decide either today or when this does come for final approval, if we need more time to discuss. We will need to know if it's going to be a franchise agreement that we're looking for or a sole proprietorship.
And, and for the city of Mount Chasta, for instance, they assess a fee against the service provider and the service provider pays the fee to the city and rolls it into their rates. Is that right?
Kinda, yes. They do, they do, it is similar to a franchise agreement with other types of services. They do pay a fee that then goes into specialty city programming. Some of that does get put on the customer. I don't know the full extent of how much that is, but I know that it's a pretty low price. I think one of the things that Mount Chasta factored in is I think what they ended up doing, and I could be wrong, this is what I thought was discussed, was that instead of doing a franchise fee, the franchisee has to keep their services at a certain price range related to income.
That's correct.
Excellent answer, thank you very much.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought they did. And that's, so yeah, so it does give us an ability to kind of lock in rates with our franchisee to say, you know, we still do want an affordability factor. So we do have those options come the back end of who we choose to negotiate with on the proposal side.
And I would add that there's a lot of latitude in this contract in city council. You know, the, the city will make a recommendation to council and the council obviously doesn't have to take the city's recommendation. But it's to choose the provider they want to go with, whether or not they're the lowest bidder. And then, and then figure out if there are elements of that RFP or that response to then strip away pieces that maybe just crushed to, might be crushingly expensive for, you know, citizens of the community. Or we just have figured out that in a certain approach doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
So yeah, yeah, so again, if we go forward with this RFP tonight, it does not lock us into any type of specific services that we are going to provide yet. What it really does is it, it really allows the possible service providers to give us their best portfolio of what each, each service would cost. And we can go from there. So for example, if we do ask for a Christmas tree pickup date and one provider comes back saying, okay, we'll charge each customer $10 for every tree. And another provider is like, oh, well, we'll charge $8 per tree. You know, that's something that we can look into. Or if it comes back that all of the providers are like, well, there's not a lot of people who would do it. So we're going to charge $52 per tree. We can go back and say, you know what, we don't need the Christmas tree pickup. We'll do something else that'll bring that cost down for that service. So we, we had a lot of options. Once we start to get those proposals in to negotiate and really evaluate the final list of services. All right, are there any other clarifying questions? All right, I'm going to open this up for public comment. If you'd like to give a public comment on this item, please feel free to let me know in the chat function that you would like to give a public comment. Or you can go to the participant section and you can raise your hand. And I will unmute you for your three minutes to comment on the revised draft solid waste request for proposal. If you are on the phone and you do not have a computer, I believe you can raise your hand by selecting star nine. And that will be able to raise your hand and I can unmute your telephone line. Nobody wants to talk about trash?
Talk trash.
Yep. All right, great. So I'm just going to close our public comment for now and I will take us into discussion. Council member Deutsch, would you like us to, would you like to start us off with discussion?
Oh, yes ma'am. So I guess to clarify then, what we're looking at is this is an exploratory document that will go off and get a lot and find out if there are people that are even interested in talking to us. And in that process, Clemens has as much a shot and probably a better shot than anybody might have. And so the concerns that we had as a council, I think have been addressed by the approach we're taking. That's my vision of it, am I wrong?
Yes.
No, he's right.
Yeah, yeah, you are, you are correct. So yeah, so yeah, so Clemens, because they are our current provider and they have a lot more data on our system, they do kind of have an advantage there. But it is an open public process, which keeps, keeps us in the legal portion of this. And so other providers could try and bid against Clemens as well. So it, it is a very open public process. And then, you know, we can go forward. So council member Art.
Well, I think I'm talking mostly to council member Kaisler, who is very concerned about this transition that we're in the midst of. And my comments are, I do think it will be a fair competition. But for the city of Dunsmere, we have kicked the can down the road, as the city manager said, with this two-page agreement that we amend year by year. But it really is rooted in the past rather than the future. So this starts a dialogue with whoever our waste hauler is going to be on the topics of green waste, on the topic of recycling, and on the topic of a long-term partnership. The proposal is a seven-year partnership with the notion, we don't want to go from vendor to vendor year by year. We want to keep the same dynamic that has served our little community so well. But we need to address whether the state makes us do it or not, the notions of recycling and green waste management to keep us fire safe. So I am very proud of the city staff for dealing with this issue. I think it benefits the whole community. And it's the beginning of the discussion, not the end of the discussion. Thank you.
All right, council member Brian, do you have any, oh, sorry, go ahead, council member Kaisler.
Peter, I have to concur with your assessment. I've looked at this thing and I think it, it's fair and you're right, it gives us a chance to upgrade. And that's kind of what we need. I'm on board.
Okay, great. Council member Brian, do you have any comments or questions?
Just appreciative of all the work going into this and look forward to having an updated contract after 30 years.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. Council member Deutsch.
Yes ma'am, I just, while we're at it, it reminded me, since we're simply exploring what's possible, have we got something I didn't notice in there about bear-proof containers?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you, good, that's all, thanks.
No problem. I do have a quick question before anyone wants to move into a motion. City manager, you has, how many days do you intend to have this RFP open? Are we going to go for a 60-day or a 35 or 30? What are you going to be recommending?
I'm going to be recommending 60 days, just given that the complexity of these types of agreements requires that waste haulers go out to a third-party vendor that specializes in responding to RFPs like Ammonino or other companies like that. And just to get them on contract and the part of respondents and to get those responses back, I think we need to afford that 60 days.
Okay, I, I would agree in that assessment. I'm just, I'm looking at page 12 of our packets, which has the RFP schedule. So basically, we would do, assuming we would do a couple amendments to this. I did catch a couple other just editing clerical errors that wouldn't change the intent of the document and I'll send those over to you. What date do you propose to open these up for availability?
Let me just take a look at this. So what I would like to do is send these out October 1st. That gives us November and December to get those responses back. We could extend it even with the holidays by another 15 days if we chose to for responses. But then it gives us, you know, ample time to then review what we get back.
Yeah, I would, looking at the calendar, I would agree, maybe a June 8th, 2021, or January, sorry, January 8th, 2021. It's been a really long week, like I said, for, for our proposal due date. I think the way to doing another week after the holidays would be great. And then it looks like, and then I think keeping the target award date TBD is smart because we don't know how long negotiations is going, are going to be. But definitely having that July 1, 2021, as the start of collection should stay. Does that sound amicable to you?
Yep.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure that that's all settled. Otherwise, it sounds like we have pretty good consensus. So if, if anyone would like to make a motion, I think we could do that today.
What would the motion look like?
It would be a motion to approve the revised draft solid waste RFP and authorize the city manager to move forward with the process.
I'm happy to make that motion.
And happy to second it.
All right, motion made by council member Art, seconded by council member Kaisler. Let me just, I will write that down and send that to you Wendy. I apologize for, for free handing that one. Is there any other discussion on the motion at hand?
Well, only one thing. If this results, as we get the responses from one or more vendors, if we can foresee that this will require substantial increase in rates to businesses and residents in Dunsmere, I don't know if we have to do Prop 218, but we certainly need to give the community a chance to say, you're on the wrong track, we can't afford it, we want more of this or less of that before we lock it in. Thank you.
Yes, that will definitely happen. All right, and then Wendy, I just emailed the motion to you. Council member Art, you have a hand up again?
No.
Oh, sorry. Right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, council member Deutsch.
Aye.
Council member Brian.
Aye.
Council member Kaisler.
Aye.
Thank you, council member Art.
Aye.
And myself as an I, motion carries. Thank you gentlemen, and thank you so much, city manager, you hot, and Blake and Wendy and whoever else has been working on this. We will be excited to see how that goes. So yeah, so once that, that RFP proposals are due, basically we'll hear back from city manager, you has on some recommended next steps and what we may need to do for that. So there will be ample time to discuss any Prop 218 needs. And it, there will be plenty of time for the council members to discuss the services that we could have. So, all right, I'm going to move us into new business. We do have two pieces of new business and we will start with our first piece of new business, which is item A, which is a resolution, resolution 2020-19 of the city of Dunsmere recognizing exemplary service of Sheriff John Lope. Council member Kaisler and council member Art kind of pushed this forward, but council member Art is the author of our resolution today. So I'm going to allow council member Art to introduce the item.
Well, I will, I will say the same thing as I did to the city manager and the mayor. Most of the information in the draft resolution honoring Sheriff Lope came from his website. And I end up as a big fan of John Lope. I was hoping he would be on the call so he could make a few comments. But I think we have been served well by John Lope and his sheriff's department. And the resolution points out the special effort he has made with regard to the community of Dunsmere, both the Veterans Memorial and our cemetery. The Big Dave and Bruce were heavily involved in the sheriff's work alternative program that provided benches and picnic tables in the community garden. And if the city can't find it in its budget to make a very nice framed addition of the resolution, I hope we vote for, I'm happy to pay for it. Thank you.
I'll go half with you.
I'll go third.
Council member Kaisler, would you like to add anything else to this item since you've requested it as well?
No, I was just wondering. You say Peter wrote it? I was wondering if I could have, I was wondering if I could have the honors of reading it.
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that after we have public comment. Are there, yes. Are there any other questions or comments before I open this up for public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to open the item number A or letter A, sorry. In new business, a resolution honoring Sheriff Lope. Is there any public comment on this item? Again, you can either select star nine if you have a telephone number and that will raise your hand and I will unmute you. Or you can request to speak in the chat or by raising your hand in the participant section. All right, seeing none, moving into discussion. Do we have any discussion prior to a vote and council member Kaisler reading the resolution?
Well, I would just like to, if I could add my support for this in the sense that I also have high respect for the sheriff. And I look at him not only as the sheriff, but also as a fellow officer in the military, being a colonel and myself being a commander equivalent to lieutenant colonel. And I appreciate all the things he's done for the vets in the county and for our particular city and working with us to make sure that we can celebrate the memorial that's been mentioned. So I salute you, Sheriff Lope. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, who would like to make the motion to approve?
Well, let's have the reading, let's have the reading first.
Well, why don't we have council, council member Kaisler, why don't you just make it a motion and read the entire item and then someone can second after?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt and approve resolution number 2020-19. A resolution of the city council honoring the service of Sheriff John Lope to Siskiyou County and the city of Dunsmere. Whereas Sheriff John Lope has served as a peace officer in California for nearly 41 years. And whereas his educational background includes a BA degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in justice management, University of Nevada Reno, as well as an advocate training as a- as well as an advocate training, advanced training as an FBI National Academy and whereas John Lope distinguished career includes an an admirable record of the success with the California Highway Patrol, serving as field officer, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and assistant chief of the CHP. And whereas John first took office of Siskiyou County Sheriff's Corner in January 2011 and won three terms with strong support from the citizens of our county. And whereas Sheriff John Lope has announced his decision to retire effective September 18th, 2020. And whereas the Siskiyou County Sheriff Office has done an outstanding job to provide professional law enforcement services to Dunsmere's residents and businesses during Sheriff Lope's tenure. Even during the difficult budget challenges of the past several years. And whereas John and Maxine Lope created the Sheriff Lope Foundation in 2011 to further their devotion to the charitable needs of those throughout Siskiyou County. And whereas John Lope is a distinguished member of the US Armed Forces, a tireless advocate for military veterans and with assistance from the John Lope Foundation, was a central force behind the creation of a Veterans Memorial Flagpole and benches in Dunsmere City Cemetery. And whereas thanks to visions and generosity of Sheriff Lope, the SCSO, the Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office Work Alternative Program crafted a sturdy picnic table and bench that now graces the Dunsmere Community Gardens in support of our Community Resource Center, adding to the enjoyment of citizens and visitors alike now. Therefore, be it resolved by unanimous proclamation that John Lope deserves the highest accolades and official recognition of his four decades of extraordinary law enforcement services to the state of California and to the county of Siskiyou. And be it further resolved that he and Maxine enjoy well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
I'll do the second.
All right, segmented by Councilmember Deutsch. We'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Arth.
Big aye.
And myself as an I. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. So thank you very much, Councilmember Arth and Councilmember Keisler for this item. And we will definitely look into a frame and a little bit fancier writing and we will sign off on that and send it to Sheriff Lope. So thank you very much. And I think we might.
Peter, that was well-written.
Yes, thank you. And I think we might have some city keys somewhere in the office that we can also include as a gift.
Well, I have to believe, especially when we get back to face-to-face meetings, Sheriff Lope would be happy to come to our fair city and say a few words.
Yes.
Look forward to it.
Of course. All right, thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to move us on to our next new business, which is where be a decision on whether to support a resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities, calling for an amendment to require social media companies to remove material which promote criminal activity. So this is the only resolution on the table for the League of California Cities, this year's 2020 Annual Conference. And the packet begins on page 135 of your agendas. So there are pros and cons listed within the packet agenda, but the league is, I believe, supporting the amendments to basically require social media companies to remove any type of material which would promote criminal activity. My understanding is that this does not include protesting as a criminal activity. It would still allow for those things to appear on those online platforms. But it does remove hate crime, hate crime, any type of threat of violence or encouragement of violence and other type of criminal activity as such. So I'm going to open this up for questions. Granted, most of the information is in the packet itself, but I guess we could try and answer those questions here. All right, seeing no questions, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment related to the proposed resolution from the League of California Cities regarding social media companies removing material which promotes criminal activity? Okay, one moment, we do have a taker.
Yay.
All right, go ahead, Devin.
Hi, people. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Devin Warner. I just, I just want to say that I, I think it's important that we all take a stand for for reasonableness, free speech, law order. And I welcome, I welcome the concept of social media platforms having some authority to take down, you know, calls to arms and calls to violence and other forms of illegal stuff. And I recognize, you know, there are some issues with freedom of speech and I don't believe that freedom of speech does extend to promoting criminal activity, especially in terms of, you know, violent attacks on people that are simply exercising their constitutional rights to speak freely. So thank you for taking this up. I, I'm grateful that you are. That's, that's all.
Right, thank you very much. Are there any other public comments related to this item? Again, you can, if you are on the phone, you can hit star nine and that raises your hand and I can unmute you. Or you can raise your hand in the participant section, or you can let me know via the chat function. All right, seeing none, we're going to move into discussion. Councilmembers, is there any discussion?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to kind of echo exactly what Ms. Warner said. I think she said it very well and so I do support this.
And give me one sec. I just found the list of things that it has on there. So basically, it would, any criminal activity defined under this is gang-related violence, domestic violence, youth access to tools of violence, including but not limiting to firearms, knives, promotion of illegal drug sales and hate speech. So those are the activities that are defined in there. So it does not cover protests. Councilmember Arth.
Well, I read the background information and if this is the future, it looks ugly to me. Does the staff have any recommendation on these resolutions or are we just finding our own way here?
It's, you know, I, I think that we support it. I mean, in that it's really just a token move to send this up and urge Congress to move on it, which they won't. In, at least in this environment. But it does raise constitutional issues and in terms of limiting free speech, but, but it also, you know, there is the argument on the other side that with social media platforms like Twitter and Facebook, et cetera, that they need to be stepping up and being held accountable for speech that promotes things that are just absolute falsehoods that can lead to violence and potential death, like the, the Weger situation. And, you know, the whole, you know, Antifa lighting fires, that kind of stuff. So yeah, I mean, there are issues, but I think this is really going to land flat as a dead letter in Washington, to be honest.
Well, on that comment, I'm happy to move to have the city of Dunsmere join in support with the other cities in advancing this resolution.
I'll second. Is there, there's a second by Councilmember Deutsch, motion by Councilmember Arth. Is there any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Sorry, go ahead. Just a second. Councilmember Keisler, you had a comment?
I think just for the record, it's a resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities calling for an amendment of Section 230 of the Communications Decency Act that was in place in 1996 to require social media companies to remove materials which promote criminal activities. Now,
Yes.
we have letters of concurrence from numerous other cities. So I, I'm happy to join the band with my fellow council members and I'll vote and I because I believe that this is a, it's a way to clean it, clean it up.
All right, thank you. We'll go back to voting order. Councilmember Deutsch was an I, correct?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
And Councilmember Keisler was an I. Councilmember Arth.
Aye.
And myself as an I. So the motion carries. Thank you very much. So seeing that, we do not have any more new business. So we move into future agenda items. Just to clarify for this meeting, City Manager Yuhas is going to bring us an update via staff comments related to updated COVID lists. Whenever those updates are available from the public sector on how Siskiyou County is doing. And then also, City Manager Yuhas and I will follow up with Northland Cable to discuss the broadband option and take a look at, you know, what's going on with that. If their ability to get grants to lower the cost overall for our residents to put that trunk line in. And then possibly, possibly and probably also a presentation from Northland on their current projects. I do have the list of other items that we're also working on. So just to clarify, we have referred short-term rentals, housing and parking over to the Planning Commission. I am working on the provisioning piece, Peter, and will bring some information back when I have that ability. I'm also looking at the code updates with the city staff and hopefully bringing that up for Planning Commission and City Council consideration. Is there any other item that I have not addressed that we should see on a future agenda? Councilmember Arth.
Well, I only have one and that is I think we would all benefit for a briefing from the Chair of the DPAC, Brian Shirley, and from our Fire Chief as to backcasting what is the state of fire safety in the community of Dunsmere. And most importantly, driving the budget for the next fire season. Are there resources that are needed by the Fire Department? Are there items and tasks that we need to incorporate into the RFP for our solid waste hauler? But I do think we owe it to our community to do our very best to make sure we are fire safe as climate change redefines our future. So I'm, I'm hoping we could just get a briefing as to, are we in good shape, bad shape? And for the leadership of the Fire Department and our Citizens Committee, are there things we should be looking at and budgeting for in the next 12 months? Thank you.
Yeah, we can request a presentation on that. Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes, ma'am. I know this is something that has been passed on to you and the Vice Mayor, but I just want to bring up the idea that I think that as an essential part of the discussion over the proposed tax, that we should have a town hall and a town hall as we did with the Prop 218s we did in the past. I think that that is essential and with the ballots coming out on October 11th, I think that we need to be able to give both sides. So I'm not saying I'm promoting one thing or the other here. But I think that we need to have an opportunity for the community, just like they did when we went through the water rate studies, to be able to understand clearly what the numbers are and where we stand. So I hope we could line something up with that before the, before the ballots come out.
Well, council voted for this thing to, to put it on the ballot. So I think it's our obligation to to promote and make the community aware.
So the biggest thing is that as a council, we cannot spend city resources or promote as a council entity, but we as individual residents of the city of Dunsmere, we can promote it. So I think what Councilmember Deutsch is saying is that as private residents, we should maybe look at putting on a town hall to discuss the pros and cons and hear what the community has to say, which I think is a good idea and can be discussed. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other future agenda items that I have missed? All right, seeing none, we will move into our final item, which is adjournment. Again, for any questions related to items presented or discussed today, please reach out to City Manager Yuhas or Wendy, our city clerk. And then do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Keisler. Is there a second?
I'll second. Oh, Mr. Brian, there you go.
Second by Councilmember Brian. Thank you very much. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstentions? All right, gentlemen, we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone who has attended tonight. And thank you for the wonderful discussion. We will see you at our next regular city council meeting, which is scheduled for October 1st, which is a Thursday in two weeks. All right, have a good night, everybody.
Well done, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.